Six o'clock. Good evening. It's six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we call the roll, please?
Schmuckel?
Here.
Agustinelli?
Here.
Doole?
Here.
Comber?
Here.
Barsha?
Here.
Vanas?
Here.
And Corn.
Here. Our president accounted for. First item on our agenda is public comment. If there's any member of the public who would care to speak to the board, please come to the podium and if you'd be so kind as to give us your name and address. Okay, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board for review of the agenda and conflicts of interest. We have one conflict.
Yes, that would be me, 7A.
All right. Any others? A motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with trustee Barsha abstaining from discussion.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Are there any questions or comments? All in papers, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion.
Consent.
Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have minutes, August 27, 2024, regular meeting, recommend approval. And bills from the general fund, $27,328.47, recommend approval.
Is there any member of the board who would care to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion? Any member of the public? Or staff?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
We have a motion of support to adopt the present consent calendar. Any questions or comments? Oral call vote, please.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Barsha?
Yes.
Vanas?
Yes.
Comber?
Yes.
Doole?
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
Next item is correspondence. And we have some correspondence from our search consultants, which we can discuss later in the meeting. We'll move on to reports. Item A is the county commissioners report.
First of all, I want to mention your volume is really, really low out here, so if you can maybe turn that up. Anyway, Brad Joe, Grand Charters County Board of Commissioners, District 4. Had a mean last week, not a whole lot of business on there, but we did get annual reports from Networks Northwest and also MSU Extension. Amongst MSU Extension, our local fair this year had brought in just shy of $1.2 million at the LifeLock auction, which set another record. So the last three years, the last three years have been over a million dollars, but it still keeps creeping up. So that's quite a testimony to the buyers in our region. And there was, I don't remember the exact number, but forty-seven, forty-two, or forty-six new buyers this year out there, which is actually very impressive and everything. Great for our community and everything. We've had some discussions in regards to budget and some study sessions on that. We have not approved a budget yet or anything, but we will have some more conversation from different department heads and managers and whatnot in regards to budget. So as that unfolds, I will keep you posted on that. And last but not least, tomorrow at 3:00, we do have a ribbon cutting ceremony out at Camp Greilich or Greilich. Everybody says a different, so I say Greilich, but anyway, the former Boy Scout camp. So with that being said, does anybody have any questions or comments or anything tonight? I'm not going to go to Blair because I do want to hear the discussion on 7A. So like always, my contact information is on the county website. If anybody needs to get ahold of me, please do, and I'll get back to you as soon as I can. Thanks.
Thanks, Brad.
Next item is the construction report. And we have that in writing.
Hand in person.
Hand in person.
Are you telling me to keep it short?
No, I don't think he saw you out there.
You're awfully quiet.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier. And correct, you do have it written in your packet dated September 2024. A few things to go over of interest, specifically Stoneridge PRV, that has been up and running. DPW is very pleased with that and want to commend this board for approving replacement of that PRV that was old and outdated and now has a means to bypass it in the event that we have to do any updates to it. We're just working through a couple punch list items. Otherwise, closeout for that, I anticipate, will be in your packet next meeting. Ridgeview Court Water Main Extension, our office and I believe Supervisor Corn was CC'd. We did get a final set of plans from the road commission. I'm just waiting to hear from them on timeline of when they intend to solicit that out for bids. Silver Lake Sewer Extension, as you guys know, you accepted that project already, but I did prepare the county ARPA reimbursement request, submitted that to county, and I believe they're going to act on that and reimburse funds sometime this month. A few other things, quite a bit of park projects, finally hashed out the bathroom situation, got all the plans to AJ's who read low for the project. And so they're able to pull their health department and building permits. And so now it's just a matter of waiting on delivery of the bathroom, but I'm hopeful that they intend to mobilize and do some work yet this fall. So I've been talking to Derek about that. Copper Ridge Trailhead, we're finishing up that RFP and plan to have that to staff to review next week. And then related to Barlow's, the trail portion, we prepared preliminary design plans to staff, identified where the easements are. So at the moment, they're sending out letters to all the residents and hopeful that they want to participate and provide respective easements for that trail. So we're getting some feedback in there, but I know our timeline, we still want to have that project out for bid so that we can have someone under contract yet this year. So trying to push on property owners. A lot of plan reviews, waiting on water permits. And then a bit of good news, we did get confirmation for the Eagle Energy Grant that that was approved. And so working through some paperwork to cover costs related to the boiler and AC unit replacements. So that was exciting news for you guys to hear that. Otherwise, it's been busy, as most of you have probably heard with passing of our DPW director. So that's allocated quite a bit of my time, too, to help staff and big shoes to fill. So that's taking up some of our efforts as well, but I am happy to entertain any questions this board may have for me.
I have one question, just so I know, because all of my neighbors keep asking me about Ridgeview Court.
Sure.
So the timeline, does that mean when they're going to be able to start? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I emailed the road commission today. He provided plans to us. I had a couple requested amendments and then reached out to him again today just to find out their timeline for both bids and construction.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next item is the sheriff's report.
Good evening. Roy Rasko with Sheriff's Department. We're still not able to squeeze any stats out of our systems yet. Our records division's working with the court, so hopefully, maybe by the end of the year, we'll have some types of stats. I don't know. Obviously, the Garfield Township CPOs, community police officers, have been really busy with frauds, trespassing, retail frauds. It's taken up a lot of their time, but they've been handling it. We've recently been invited to work with Metro Fire at a car seat inspection program. Jen with Metro Fire says it's a really busy day that they have with William Chevrolet, so I'll have one or two people get involved with that. And then Metro also invited us to be a part of their open house. We'll have a couple deputies at Station 12 in October. And recently, all of the people that we have that are new or out of field training, one person didn't make it through field training, so now we have another vacancy. And we have three people that are being sponsored in the academy that'll be done in December. So we have one position that really needs to be filled. Other than that, things are going well. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you much. Next item is the GT Metro Fire report.
Good evening. All right, submitted to you, you have the August incident reports with the side-by-side of the totals between all of Metro and Garfield Township. Totals for all of Metro for the month were 541 incidents and total for the township is 374. As usual, we have the large majority of those calls associated with medical assist, assist the EMS crew or MMR crews, and then emergency medical services other. Moving on to the next page with the breakdown in the graph, again, you have that total of 541 for the month for GT Mesa. Garfield coming in again at that 374, 69%. 19% at East Bay or 105, 62 in Acme, and then just two incidents outside of the area. The breakdown by station, Station 11 is our leader. They tend to seem to kind of fall in that at 27% of the calls, followed by Station 1 in East Bay at 26% of the call, and then second up to that, or third with Station 12 at 25% and Acme at 15%. Station 9 is 7% of the calls. Getting into our EMS complaints, you have the next two pages. You have all of Metro with the EMS complaints and then the following page with the Garfield EMS complaints. If I look on the second page on Garfield calls, Falls still coming in as the largest number of calls that we have under EMS, 53 for the month, some difficulty breathing at 28, indolent assists at 21, general weakness at 20, and so on. The total EMS calls for Garfield for the month were 331. In addition to the statistics and the call volume, we have, we had just onboarded three new probationary candidates. These are candidates that we are hoping to make part-time firefighters once they complete their training. We onboarded them. They're doing some orientation training. We're getting them prepared to attend the Regional Fire Academy starting here and I believe the next month. So hopefully, we'll get them into the academy and then again have that feeder for our part-time program because we still want to bolster that staffing. Last, August 28th and 29th, we performed the final inspection on the new engine we've been talking about for months and months. We did that at the manufacturer. We did find a punch list of items that they did have to fix and address. The majority of those were resolved at the factory, which is one of the benefits of being there because it's not, you know, they're not getting paid. It's not leaving until they address that stuff, so they quickly can attend to all that. There were a couple of small items that do need to be handled by the dealership. So right now, that truck has been brought from Appleton, Wisconsin down to Wixom, and it's at the dealership there. We expect it to be delivered to Metro within the next week or two. We did complete our training on the new accounting software, Netsweek for Government. That actually has been implemented this month. We started September 1 using that software. We're doing that in conjunction with our current software so we can have a full transition to the new software in October. So we're excited to kind of get that behind us as well. In fire prevention, a couple highlights, our Safe Neighborhood Program. We're concluding the Summer Blitz, as we call it, within the next month. We'll be wrapping that up. But this year to date, we're approaching about 800 alarms installed for the year. So we're going to surpass that, over 800, about, you know, 825 or even more homes that we actually visited during that timeframe. So we're excited about that. Also, we'll be, as Sheriff had mentioned, we'll be hosting the open house, October 5th, at Station 11. We'll also be holding our annual 9/11 memorial ceremony tomorrow morning, and that starts at 8:30. That'll be, you know, remembering 23 years since the attacks. So that'll be at the 911 Memorial Park behind our station or our admin station on Parsons Road. Also, next week, September 17th, we're going to be hosting a one-day seminar on ISO Public Protection Class. We had requested that ISO send some of their people out and conduct a class. We sent the invitation out to area fire departments and chiefs so they can join us on that. Couple of their program managers and their field reps will be there to kind of walk through the process. So when they do the grading schedule, how an organization or community can improve that grading. So looking forward to that, and that'll be again on the 17th at the EOC. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the MMR report.
Hello, Amy Fairchild, Operations Manager with MMR here in Northwest. Been a little bit since I've seen you all. August, we took care of 329 calls for Garfield Township alone. For all of the Grand Traverse area, we were a little bit over 700. So you guys count for a little bit over half. July, we were just shy of 400 calls here in Garfield, so my crews have been enjoying the tiny bit of a break that August gave them. Leading the way was Falls as our most common reason for being called out, followed shortly thereafter by a sick person. We do have our new building that here in Garfield Township, they got rid of the asbestos that we found after we leased the building, of course. But that's been done. They're working on the demo permits, working on the renovation permits. We just saw the drawings today and I got all excited and did the happy dance. So hopefully, they're expecting that we can be in the end of November or beginning of December. So no more sitting on top of each other in our small base, so we're excited for that. We have a couple paramedics that finished paramedic class a couple of months ago. They have been trained. They are on the road on their own. They're doing fantastic. We have another paramedic class that's in their externship phase now. They will be testing in November, and we are anticipating getting three or four paramedics out of that one. We have an EMT class going on right now. 10 of those so far have committed to MMR. I am hoping and praying they stick with us and then threatening if need be. So hopefully, they'll stay with us. I've been very excited. I actually worked the truck Labor Day for a little while and had a couple of them working with me, and I was impressed. They were some good, solid students, so. We do have another paramedic class that'll be starting in January at our new building. We'll also have another EMT class starting in January at our new building. So that's our updates at the moment. We are going to participate also in Metro's open house. They were kind enough to invite us and we have all sorts of fun handouts, so if you have young ones, please feel free to bring them. But you might want to avoid the rubber duckies. They've been bringing those around my office all day today and they squeak. Is there any questions or anything I can answer for you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Planning Department report for September 2024.
Good evening. That report is in your packet. I just wanted to make one highlight on the top of page two. The planning commission is going to be reviewing the High Tops bar restaurant going in a portion of the former Sears. So the K1 go-karting facility is open and operating. It takes up most of the front end of that building, but at the rear end is where High Tops is going in. It's a little bit larger than I think was originally anticipated. It's more than just a sports bar. They are also proposing a nightclub. So it's roughly about 27,000 square feet, so it's large. So that is something that the planning commission is going to take under review for tomorrow evening. Also, we're expecting an application over at the former Kmart building for 24/7 golf. That will also have to go in front of the planning commission. And then we're working with property owners there on a comprehensive development plan. We're seeing, finally getting some plan layouts for that, for an overall site plan for the full Cherryland Center site. So we're working with that, and that will eventually have to come to the planning commission. Also, I just wanted, on your desk, I just handed out a map with some of the signs that we, this was one of the small little ARPA projects that we did with the road commission, installing these entering Garfield signs. There was 19 locations. 18 of them are in place, but this just allows for people to understand that they are coming into Garfield Township. The sign design was limited to based on what MDOT regulates in terms of roadway signage and so forth. So we had a couple of these already in place that we kind of used as the models to what we were allowed to do with the road commission. But just wanted to show you where those are at. They're all in place out there in the field, and that's all I have.
Any questions for John?
John, on the Kingsley Lumber one, it says proposed lumber processing and sawmill operation. Do you know, are they really, are they making cut logs there?
Well, part of that is what our definition is in the ordinance, so they could, yes.
Basically, it's a lumberyard, though, is what they're looking to do?
Yeah, kind of like Northern Supply, kind of like that type of thing. It's mostly, there'll be some amount of retail, but it will, there'll be processing lumber as well, building trusses and that type of thing.
Oh, okay.
So this, in talking with them, they have a first phase, but then they have also potentially a second phase at that location as well.
That's the location where the eye doctor surgery center?
Oral surgeon, yeah. That was, project was approved, I think, around 2018, and they never went forward with it and sold the property to Kingsley Lumber.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's no other questions for planning. We will move on to the perks and rec report, and this is in writing. They will be happy to discuss any items if you give them a call. Next is the clerk's report.
And it is in writing. And then we're getting ready for elections. It's starting again. Phone's been ringing nonstop. People want to make sure they're on the list for the permanent ballot or they want to get on that list to get their ballot mailed to them. It's been busy. We're getting all ready. Hopefully, the ballots are going to be sent to the printer soon from the county. They had to wait for ruling on the Robert F. Kennedy name being taken off or on the ballot. I think that's been done. I think it's done. So we're hoping to get the ballots by the end of September, and they'll be going out as soon as we get them.
Good. Any questions for our clerk? All right, next is the supervisor's report. We are working with the county to attract and retain a new director for the Department of Public Works. In the meantime, we have people picking up the slack and juggling. We got our TTCI meeting today. Long conversation about developing criteria to rate road projects. And a little bit of a delicate subject. Our website and branding committee met today and had some interesting ideas they shared with us. We probably will get a look at those, the first meeting in October? Chloe says yes. And I got a call from MDOT on the two mast arm projects on 31 South. And they ask, well, first of all, they told us that they won't be let until 2025, so we won't have a contract or a commitment for this year. So that is, that means they won't qualify for ARPA funds. So we'll have to move those ARPA funds somewhere else. But they ask if we wanted to paint them or have them in metallic.
Where is this at?
This is, one is in front of the IMAX, that area.
Okay.
And the other one is... Mm-hmm.
Meyer.
I should remember that, right?
Meyer. It's located at Meyer.
At Meyer, right. And they're 60,000 to 80,000 per intersection to put up mast arms as opposed to wire boxes. But the question that they have now is, do we want them painted? It'd be about $2,000 a piece to paint them. My initial reaction was no, but obviously, it's a board decision. We have had them painted before, and then when the paint comes off, it's a powder coat, so you can't redo that on a standing pole. So it's kind of a, if they're metallic to start with, they're metallic at the end. The other one was, do we want lighted signs telling people what the turns are, and I think they're pretty obvious. Those are about $6,000 a piece.
Do we have to make this decision now or wait till this contract is going to be due into 2025?
They would like to, they have a very slow process, obviously. They would like to have everything in order now or as soon as possible.
Since we can't use the ARPA funds, we want to reconsider the mast arms.
Well, we made the decision to get the mast arms before we allocated up the ARPA funds. So I don't think that should change the project itself. The question is, paint or lighted signs? You know, if we have to put a lighted sign in front of Meyer saying Meyer, I don't think that's necessary.
How long? They're open 24 hours.
And the sign on their building is lit where it says Meyer?
Yeah.
I don't think we should do the lighted signs, and I think we should just leave it metallic. It's probably an aluminum or galvanized finish.
Yeah.
And if it's powder coated, it's got to come down to go get painted. Yuck. Then what, temporary signage? Why that's out of there?
I don't know. The ones we have at Silver Lake and the street behind Meyer there.
Frankie.
Frankie.
Those are, have been blasted, a lot of the paints have been blasted off, and they've just sat there like that since. It was not really attractive.
Tops look good.
Tops look great.
Those are the green ones, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chloe?
I remember when the one went in at Barnes. Is that what it would look like, the metallic?
Yes.
Because I thought we all agreed that that looked bad and that we were upset they didn't ask us to paint it.
It grew on me.
Oh, it did?
It did. I go by there every day.
Okay.
Yeah, and, well, I'll wait for my turn.
But is that what it would look like? Is it shiny silver?
Right. And it's, it is, I think it was surprised that they got there. Nobody told us they were putting those up. And it was kind of like, all of a sudden, there are these giant metallic poles.
Well, I just think like going forward, we should pick and be consistent as we do them so they kind of match.
Yeah.
And if we have some that are green, I almost think we should do these green, but I do understand they're hard to fix. So I would say paint them, but that's me. I'm one member, so, but how do you feel, Chris?
Like, we have to paint them, you know, they're chipped and there are a lot of work to correct. So the metallic ones, like I said, I went by there and it looked like, I don't know, I don't, it just was out of place.
Yeah, it has a commercial industrial feel to it. It's in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, and I feel like, you know, I've gotten used to it, and then that way, if you just leave it that way, you don't have to paint it down the road. So.
Yep.
So.
I feel the same way, Chris, to leave it the same way because of the fact that it's going to cost $2,000 now to paint. But let's just say 40 years down the line, we have to take them down and have them painted. That's going to be in maybe $10,000. So looking at that in the long run, I think we should just keep them metallic.
Is that the process? Do you really have to take them down, or is there a way to patch that powder coat? Do we know that?
I think you can paint it, but it's, again, the powder coating is supposed to be more durable.
Yeah.
And I don't know how the powder...
They don't have some machine?
It's electrically charged paint molecules that they bond to the metal, and then it goes through an oven and bakes it on.
Yes.
So when it comes off, it's a flaking process, not a wear-off process. It comes off in chunks. We did that in the automotive when I was an engineer.
Yeah.
I think to keep it consistent, if everybody's okay with the metallic, maybe the green ones, when they need to come down to be repainted, they just get sandblasted and turn them metallic.
Yeah, and I, my feeling is, the ones at Silver Lake and Zimmerman are still holding up well.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's...
And those are black, aren't they?
Yes.
Those are black.
I believe so.
Yeah, those aren't even green. Those are black. Different color there.
Correct.
Hmm.
Big decision.
And they're holding up well?
Yeah.
I haven't really even looked at the ones on Frankie.
The ones on Frankie are definitely losing paint.
Yeah, they are.
These are going to have a lot more traffic going by them on 31, too, aren't they?
I would think so, yeah.
A lot of roads.
And again, that is more of an industrial, commercial area, so I don't think it would look out of place to be...
I think they look kind of unfinished, though. That's my personal opinion. It doesn't look like a nice polished, intentional thing. I think it looks kind of unfinished, like we forgot to paint it. But that's just me. I don't know.
Well, I can delay it a couple of weeks if...
I mean, I'm the only one who feels that way, it seems like. I don't know. Will Leany, you're thinking high traffic, it should be painted, or how are you...
I'm not painting. I think it will be chipped quicker, quicker.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm just one member. Go ahead and take a vote on it.
I'd like to make a motion that we, the mast arms, they leave metallic and that they're not be lighted.
Okay, we have a motion.
Support.
And support from Barshew. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
There's your guidance.
There we go. And that concludes the supervisor's report, unless you have any questions. All right, we will move on to unfinished business. 7A, discussion of candidates for the township manager position. Thursday, we interviewed three candidates. One of them just disappeared.
I, in my own personal opinion, there was a lot of questions that were unanswered, that I had, that we didn't ask the candidates. I would like to see it possibly if we could interview them again and maybe answer those questions to make, in my opinion, my, my decision a little bit easier.
Yeah?
You want to do all three?
It's up to the board there.
What's, what's your feelings, Molly?
I have one candidate that I would like to interview again. I don't know if other people have questions about several other candidates, but I have one that I would like to invite back to ask some questions.
Steve?
So I'm going to go off on a tangent before I answer that for a second, because I wasn't in the closed session. This Blaine Oborn and Dana Schoen, Schoen?
Yeah.
Whatever happened with them?
They both signed a contract with somebody else.
Oh, that explains that, all right. Because they look like they had the experience. I just wondered, because I wasn't there. Unfortunately, I was out of town.
Yeah, Dana dropped out.
He's a year from my town.
He dropped out. He was one that we were going to interview. He was one of the top four we were going to interview, and he dropped out.
Dana?
And Blaine, we did not bring him forward for an interview, because we decided, based on his cyber search, that there were some things that we didn't think he'd be a good fit for Garfield.
So based on my Google search, I wouldn't mind questioning two of the candidates, but one of them, I'm pretty adamant is out.
And the same way.
And do you want us to say which ones we want? I mean, or not?
At this point, if you have two, then I think we need to do all three, unless we all agree one that's not out.
Well, let's see if we agree on that.
Chloe?
I'm, I came here tonight ready to make a decision, but I don't, I don't mind interviewing more to gather more information. So I, I have one candidate that I think would be the best. I have one that I think would do good, and then I have one that's a definite no for me, so.
That's the same with me.
I have one that I like the best. One is a definite no, and the other one I'm very questionable about, just by the comments that they made at the board, at the questions.
Okay, I'm in that same category. There's one I really like and one I'm ambivalent about and another that I wouldn't have, so. Do we want to interview all three candidates again?
No. I don't see a need to do that.
Barbie, is that you? She's our consultant here. I thought maybe you could come up forward and give us some guidance. How do we...
Yeah, hi, nice to meet you all. I'm Barbie. I'm filling in and helping out Amy Sell. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I would say you probably want to interview those that you truly are struggling about. I wouldn't do all three just because. But if you're truly torn between two of them, then absolutely, if you have more questions and you want to explore more, it's certainly a possibility.
So then I would like to re-interview Sorenson and Barshew.
And the same way.
So am I.
Me, too. I'd be fine with that.
Those are the two, yeah.
And what about supervisor?
I think interviewing Sorenson and Barshew is the right path.
Okay. It's just that this is a major decision we're making, and I can't, off the cuff, because I still have questions, I can't off the cuff say, "I motion, I make a motion to hire this person." I can't do that in my own mind. It's not, I can't justify that. So I have, I have a few questions that I would like answered, and if they're answered, then my decision is probably going to be very easy.
So a question for Barbie.
Sure.
We had questions that you provided for us in the last interview. Is it wise to just open it up and let the board ask whatever questions? I have different questions for Sorenson than I have for Barshew.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate if you're doing second interviews, and there's certain topics or areas that you're unsure about that you want to explore. And maybe just put together some interview questions and run them by Amy just to make sure, you know, they're legal and all, yeah.
Yeah, because I was going to say, we should have a do not ask list, but she would be the one to filter that.
Yeah.
I know there are certain things you can't ask.
Correct. Correct.
Can we do that sooner rather than later?
I think Mr. Barshew is easy to reach.
Yes.
We'll see what Mr. Sorenson looks like and report back to us.
Yeah, do, do, as far as like interviewing schedules or days, do we want to maybe pick a couple and see, and then I can run those by him?
Everybody got their...
Everybody's got their calendar out.
Everybody's going for their mobile device.
It would be nice if I could leave here tonight and have a few days times options to run by them.
Right, that's okay. Are you thinking next week?
Are you thinking next week or...
Sure, I mean, whatever works for you guys.
Next week, I'm good. Almost anytime. I'll make it work.
Yeah, I am good next week also.
Probably not Friday.
Yeah, because we're closed, right?
So I'm good next week, Monday through Thursday, and the following week, I'm good Monday through Wednesday.
I think next week is, the sooner the better, so we can make this decision.
I just didn't know if Sorenson could get up here in that short a time.
Right.
That's why I'm offering to you the second week out, the 23rd, 24th, 25th.
Well, 24th, we have a meeting here, so.
Yeah, I'm going to be getting really busy with elections, getting things ready to go. I would just as soon do it next week if we can.
I was thinking that, too, because your ballots might be going out the 20th.
Yeah, I have something at noon on the 18th. I have a meeting, but other than that, I could be back. I have an appointment.
I would prefer an afternoon, if possible, because I have things in the morning, but if possible. If not, I can change things.
Yeah, any, any of those four days next week afternoon is fine.
Okay. That would be great.
Not late, because Sorenson has to drive.
Right. So I have, Rebecca's probably listening in, and I will call her right after this meeting, and she will call him as soon as possible, or at least tomorrow, by tomorrow morning, and just see availability, and then we can report back to you as soon as we hear something.
That would be awesome, Barbie.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be awesome.
Okay, great. And then if you want to work on putting questions together and then just run those by us, that might be a good idea, too.
All right.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, Barbie. We appreciate it.
Anybody have anything else for Barbie? Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll go get them.
I need my steps taken.
I got my... I have $13,000 already.
He was playing games on his phone.
I'm sure he was answering emails.
I'm sure he was answering, working.
Okay, that brings us to new business. Item A, a public hearing for consideration of the amount of property tax millage to levy for the 2025 general and fire fund accounts. And we are proposing to levy the same thing we levied last year.
So no increase in taxes?
Correct.
I make a motion that we can do the amount of property tax millage to levy for the 2025 general and fire fund account.
At 1.75.
I'm sorry, at 1.75. I forgot that.
And at 2.75 for the fire?
Yep. Operating is 1.750, and fire is 2.75.
Support.
We have a motion and support to adopt the 2024 tax rate request as presented. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And that brings us back to public comment. You do? Please, come to the podium, and if you'd be so kind, just give us your name and address.
Absolutely not. Alyssa Corn, I'm here as a deputy director of Traverse City Housing Commission. Good news, we're applying for a tax credit for Phase Two in the October 1st round for the flats at Carriage Commons. If you guys haven't driven by, I suggest you drive by. Phase One is going faster than our Tebow's property, and the city is going. We actually are further along in construction, and we started three months later. That is a 48-unit and clubhouse phase. The next phase will be 98 units. I wanted to share this with you because yesterday, Representative Roth was kind enough to meet with us. We are looking for possibly appropriations in a supplemental budget this year. As you know, they are meeting one day before the election, which is September 25th. So if you happen to talk to any of your representatives down in Lansing, support for appropriations for this project would be great. We have a $6 million funding gap to close on this. We also had that on Phase One and closed that through MEDC, so we're looking at MEDC. But also, we would love to see some appropriations for housing finally come up north. If Blair Township could get some, I think Garfield could, too. So I just wanted to throw that out, that we are absolutely moving at breakneck speed and did not expect to be in this tax credit round either, but we have everything together and are moving pretty quickly. Now, the other hat, I am one of your county road commissioners. I absolutely hate the silver post. Thank you, Chloe. I drive by it every day. My neighbor, Chris, didn't help me out on that one. Either did my husband, who also drives by it every day, but...
Whoa, bashing.
Ouch, shots are fired. I, I just wanted to tell you that our previous administration at the road commission did not include the board in any of those decisions. I was as surprised as all of you to turn onto my road and see that silver post. So we made it clear that we wanted to have our new administration reach out to give the townships the choice as to whether to paint them, to have the lighted signs. So that's kind of why you guys are seeing it now and had a chance to weigh in. If there was public comment during that, I would have absolutely been a solid vote with Chloe on, on the green one. But I just wanted to fill you in on why that was coming here and why you guys didn't know about it before, because we didn't know about it either on the road commission. And since you don't have your road commissioner here, I'm here to answer any questions. I skipped Blair tonight to come here for, for this meeting, but if you guys need me, you can let me know. Molly, I do have a meeting on your particular road commission question. I have three projects right now that have come to me, so we're going to meet with Dan and Larry on those next week, after I get my tax credit apps done.
And you can push my road fast, too, okay?
Yeah, so we are working on Jefferson as well, the SAD. We have four of them right now pending, so we are talking about that one as well. I represent Blair, Grant, and East Bay, so I'm not as up to par on the SADs for Garfield, but I certainly will ask about it at, at my meeting, because it's a lot easier for me to kind of meet with them privately, and that way, we don't waste board time.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. I will add that to my list. I have a Blair one, an Acme one, and a Garfield one, and a Long Lake one, so that'll be good.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment?
Judith Danforth, 1139 Northwest Silver Lake Road. I am grateful to hear your decision about the three candidates and the omission of one. The remaining two, there are lots of things that I could say, but in overall purview is in effect, and you are well aware of this, but I will express it because I don't know who I represent out there, but maybe a lot more people than one. I'm concerned with the term of service that might be available. The one candidate was very explicit in that this was going to be his last hurrah, and loves the Traverse City area, which we all do, and is looking at point in time to making this last stint his do, to do before he retires. That leads a question for me, and probably for yourselves, about longevity. As we know, this is a tremendous shift in the township for operating, and my experiences has taught me that it's always a lot longer in that shift than anticipated, someone coming in who's looking at retirement. Things become very convoluted, and there might be a desire for an exit, understandably so. I mean, this is human nature, and this is the way we operate for the majority of us. So that's really a major concern that I have. I have some other insights into him, but that's maybe for another time. The remaining candidate on that, I see longevity. And I listen very carefully to the questions. I understand your concerns, or some of your concerns, as best I can with skill sets, et cetera. My vision for each of them is that they come with different backgrounds, obviously, similarities, maybe in function, but actually in experience. maybe in function, but actually in experience and you have the age of one versus quote youth in another. However, the, the remaining candidate I see as a possibility for longevity. I see infusion into a community that's already existing relationships. I see that there is a need with hitting the ground and running to have as much background information in the community and connections that already exist versus someone who's coming in who has not been afforded that opportunity yet. And that's not to say that he wouldn't be able to make that adjustment. Longevity is really a major concern, in my opinion. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Is there any other business to come before the board today?
I have one comment and I'm getting on my bandwagon now. And when we were talking to Beta and I was asking about the traffic and they said the buses are going to be leaving like at 7:30 to do their pickups and usually coming back at 4:00. I beg to differ. I beg to differ and there's several different times that I've gone out because I'm retired and I can go out any time of the day. There's always two to three to four buses coming past, coming down Lefrane here. So what they told us in that meeting was an untruth because they're saying that everyone's going to be going out at the same time and they're usually coming back and they're going to be all out in the neighborhood, but that's not true. I mean, there's, at least every time, like tonight here at 5:25, when I come in here, there was four of them going one way and two of them going the other way. So that's six.
I don't want to be an apologist for Beta. They're clearly not my favorite organization in the county. But they were speaking of leaving the bus garage, which would be on the, not on Lefrane.
On Hammond.
On Hammond. So the transfer stations are on Hammond and those run all day.
But they have to come, they come down Hammond to go along down Lefrane here.
But they're not pulling out on Hammond.
Oh, no, no, no.
That was, we, we asked about the idea of buses pulling out into traffic and making left-hand turns.
No, no, I specifically asked about the traffic on Lefrane here. I specifically asked in that meeting and they said that they were going to be going out in the morning and coming in the afternoon and that was it. There wasn't going to be that many Beta buses on Lefrane here. That's because I specifically asked that question of them and that's the answer that I got.
Okay, I didn't hear that conversation. I did hear John talk about.
No, I knew about the Hammond, yeah. On Hammond, I know that, but I.
That was the answer to the Hammond question.
Right, but the answer, then I asked about the traffic on Lefrane here at that point in time and that's when they told me. That's what they said. I'm just, I'm just saying as, I thought we were, I was, they misspoke.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
Ma'am, it was ma'am, I heard ma'am. I just wanted to update everybody on Joint Rec Authority. So Joint Rec Authority has, went into the position of bonding. They're going to bond up to 3 million for the projects that they're doing. The building 206 that's sitting next to the Cathedral Barn, 204, Botanic Gardens is going to be doing a lot of the work in there. They have fronted a ton of the money. Joint Rec Authority contributed money to them. That's why we had to go into bonding to get all this figured out and everything. There's a huge concern and I know Chuck's working on it right now. There's no water there and no pressure. And Metro Fire is well aware of it. Chief Belcher, Assistant Chief Belcher, sorry, I upgraded him. He's aware of it and the concerns that the Joint Rec Authority has is there's funding that has to be spent by a certain time. Drawings are going to get finalized, they're going to send them out to finalizing bid in Metro or anybody could say sorry, but there's insufficient water and pressure. And the project goes on hold, yet we sit there with the bonding money that's supposed to be spent as quickly as possible. So I know Chuck's working on it. I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on this. Not only is the pressure low, but they're putting in, they have a fire pump right now in the bottom of 204, so if there is a fire there and they need the suppression system, it'll kick on and that pump will kick on and create pressure to come out through the sprinkler system. They're going to have to do the same thing in 206 because of the insufficient pressures, but the problem now they're concerned about is insufficient volume. There may not be water to suck through the pipes to go through the sprinkler system. So it is a huge issue and Joint Rec Authority people are very nervous about this and Botanic Gardens is, too. There is options that the city's working on and I know Chuck's been involved in them for different methods to supply pressure which will increase volume. Some of them are city water coming that way, other ones are Garfield water going back into the city system to pressure the park. So I just wanted the board to be aware that they're, they're nervous and afraid of the lack of water and pressure and I wished we had Jennifer involved and maybe she is, but it's not a Garfield issue right now, but it could be if they hook into our system.
Yeah, Jennifer has been involved.
Good, good. So you're aware of it, which is awesome. I feel way better knowing that. Our Cedar Run tank has got tons of pressure coming down there and they did do a study that if they tapped into the water at Copper Ridge and brought it down, they could end up with 80 to 100 PSI coming down from the pressure of the tank. But I think they're going to another one over by the Munson complex that has some valving system that's not been used for a while and Jennifer might be able to speak to it better, but I just wanted the board to know that there, there's a lot of nerves there and everybody's hoping that this can be resolved. They've been lacking water pressure and volume for a very long time and Brian Belcher's been aware of it and nervous of it. Thank God we have tankers and there's hydrants nearby, but you just hope there's never a condition where you need that. But when you're building a brand new building that has to be sprinkled, too, next to another building that's got to be sprinkled, yikes. So I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on it. The bonding issue was a huge thing that we went through. It's very doable with Joint Rec Authority, especially with the past, what we passed, trying to remember the specifics of that, but we, more money's going into Joint Rec Authority and that's kicking in here soon.
Right.
So.
Yeah, they're fine.
Yep.
We need to work on our budget.
Yeah. We have only.
Just one more thing.
We've got elections, we've got township manager, we got budget.
So we'll get, I'll get the staff working on their budgets and maybe when we meet back, we can set up a time to, to work on that. So bring your calendars with you when we meet again so we can get working on it.
Perfect.
We need to have more meetings.
Sounds like.
Next week is good, so you can pick one of those days if you can get your stuff together, but.
Okay, maybe we'll do that and have Karen send out something.
They're looking for, at you because I know you're going to be getting really busy.
You've got elections, you're going to be.
Yeah, it's kind of a big one. It's getting a little.
Kind of a big one.
Kind of a big one? Yeah.
I'm sure Karen will add that to her calendar. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Just Rich's retirement party was today. He's worked for Garfield for 13 years and the county for over 30 years, so just want to say thanks to Rich for his service. We're going to miss him.
He's going to be a huge loss for the builders in our area.
There, there aren't any other Riches out there, I'm sure.
He was so easy to work with and he handled issues very gentlemanly like and, yeah, he was a great guy to do.
And he knew the code book by heart.
Yeah, it was pretty much.
And we're having a really, really, really hard time replacing him. We can't get anybody with the qualifications we need right now.
Seems to be the way of life lately, unfortunately.
Everybody wants the money, but they don't want to put the effort.
Correct. Anything else? There are no objections. We stand adjourned.